Yes, sir.
If I brought a guitar, would you do the honors?
Absolutely.
Oh, look.
Thanks, darling.
You know, another thing we might consider is, um, just changing the intro music as the meeting comes on.
Do we have, uh...
Or would you rather, would you rather pull up a stool and say...
I asked Jessica if I wanted...
Actually, I listened to you sing this afternoon. What's that?
Uh...
Did you get my present after?
I did, and I appreciate it.
Does anyone have a spat pen?
I do.
Thanks. Just think it. Right now. No, thanks.
All right.
This whole town's filled with sin.
Go vote.
And somebody...
Somebody takes offense.
Somebody will troll you.
Yeah. What did you say?
I just, um, I reposted with the town's foot and just about remember, hey, bring your ballots with you. And, you know, and the derp, 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 derp.
Peter, did you tell everyone what Pecca said?
Oh, yeah, we have nothing to worry about.
We got this.
It, it literally, it honestly, it did calm me for a short amount of time.
Yeah, but when you think about it, we're not going back. Obviously appeals to women my age and older from before Roe was passed.
Right.
We're not going back means abortion.
Right.
And so obviously people in that generation know they're signing.
Great. I'm waiting on John because he had the actual agenda for his first meeting.
To there, to out there.
I have the best indication.
Okay.
I want ten dollars on a scratch letter to take it.
All right, are we ready?
It's just like, forget that, forget I spent fifty dollars getting it.
Just me. All right. Richard comes from... We're gonna do something we don't usually do today, just two meetings in a row. Okay, um...
So I'm gonna convene this Brattleboro Select Board special meeting. Uh, it's Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four, and John, was this meeting officially and properly warned?
Yes, Daniel, it was.
Very good. Um, I am gonna open up, um, for extremely be- brief public participation. Um, we will have a regular meeting at six fifteen where there will be public participation as well. Are there any members of the public present who would like to speak about something that is not on this first agenda? Which is an Echo Restaurant and Lounge third-class liquor license renewal? Couple of ducks. Yep, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, um, so then we'll move on to new business. The only bit of business here is to consider a third-class liquor license renewal for Echo Restaurant and Lounge. Uh, there is a memo in front of you. Staff recommend approval of the renewal application for Echo Restaurant Lounge, located at sixty-nine seventy-three Main Street for their third-class liquor license. John, you wanna say anything more about it?
No, that's it. Um, this came to our attention on Monday, and, uh, we know that it is a hardship for the owners to continue without a liquor license, so we, we wanted to expedite this to get it in front of you for consideration on a renewal.
Very good. Um, any discussion? Franz?
A clarification, just, I, um, the third-class liquor license that covers serving mixed drinks as well as wine and beer?
Wine and beer.
Just wine and beer, not mixed drinks.
No, third classes.
Oh, third classes, all of them?
Third classes, hard liquor, and which one?
Beer and wine is...
Spirits.
Okay, beer and wine and spirits. That's all. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Uh, the questions.
Do we get a free drink out of it?
I don't think so. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion?
I would.
Okay, Franz?
Um, I move that we approve the renewal application for Echo's Restaurant and Lounge, located at sixty-nine seventy-three Main Street for their third-class liquor license.
Okay, any final discussion on that? Okay, Franz has made a motion to approve the, um, license for Echo Restaurant and Lounge, third-class liquor license. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye, that passes five zero. You're welcome. Um, okay, the next item of business is to adjourn. Elizabeth?
I move to adjourn.
Elizabeth has made a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes five zero. We are adjourned. Now, I'm gonna convene a regular meeting of the Brattleboro Select Board. Um, and, John, was this regular meeting properly warned?
Yes, Daniel, it was also.
Wonderful. Um, we're gonna go into executive session, so I'm gonna make a couple of motions. The first one is that I move to find that premature public knowledge regarding pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body is or may be part, uh, maybe a party, would clearly place the town at a substantial disadvantage because the Select Board risks disclosing its negotiating strategy if it discusses the proposed items in public. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes five zero. Um, furthermore, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss pending or probable civil litigation or prosecution to which the public body is or may be a party under the provisions of Title One, Section three-one-three, A-one-E. And invited into the executive session are the town manager, assistant town manager, and the town attorney. Discussion on that? Okay, uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes five zero. We're gonna go into executive session.
Good.
Would you like some water, Franz?
I sure would.
Did I turn off my phone?
Good, Daniel? They're ready when you are.
Great, thank you.
Did I leave my phone?
All right.
Uh, Select Board, are we ready? Okay, um, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's the, uh, Brattleboro Select Board meeting of Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four. It's a regular meeting. We had unusually a special meeting just before this regular meeting, which we, um, dispatched quite quickly, and then we went into executive session where we took no action. Um, before we did that, I asked John whether this meeting was properly warned, and he said...
Yes, it was, Daniel.
Thank you so much. Um, our first order of business is to approve minutes from October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Richard?
Uh, I move we approve the minutes.
Okay, Richard's made a motion to approve the minutes of twenty, uh, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? Okay, see none. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. Next up, chairs remarks. So, I've got a couple of things I wanna say. First of all, I wanna mark the retirement of Fire Chief Lenny Howard, and that was announced on Friday, and I wanna thank Lenny for his decades of service to this community. In my experience of knowing Chief Howard, I first started working with him when he was Assistant Chief, and he was working as Health Officer, and that was kind of some of my, I don't know, some of the kind of most noteworthy, kind of like, Lenny Howard kind of stuff, because that is a person that behaved in such a compassionate manner, a kind manner, but also a firm manner, who knew that he wanted to protect the health and well-being of his community, and I saw that on a regular basis. As Fire Chief, he has led the department excellently and has, you know, set standards and a culture that is really about, you know, serving your community, representing your people, and trying to, you know, proceed with excellence in all things. And so I just wanna kind of recognize Chief Howard's career and thank him and... And we'll have that remix. Thanks, Franz. And so, thank you to Chief Howard. I'm sure other board members will have things to say, and I'm sure that in time we'll have some sort of ceremonial kind of doings, but for now, I just wanna note that. Secondly, I wanna speak to the scheduling of this meeting. There were several people in the community who wished this meeting wasn't happening tonight, and I wanna sort of peel back the curtain a little bit and let you know that we tried our best to have this meeting not happen tonight. We know that people are probably distracted at home watching the election kind of come to a head. We also know that, like, we probably won't know anything for quite a few hours at the very least, and probably maybe even a couple of days. So, we tried to have this meeting be last night, we tried to have it be tomorrow night, we tried to have it be on Thursday, and for a variety of reasons, mostly to do with people's availability, we weren't able to make that happen. I did get some late-breaking feedback on Friday afternoon that, oh, what if you'd had this meeting start at seven o'clock? And I'll be quite honest with you, it just didn't occur to me, okay? And so here we are at six twenty now on a Tuesday, which is our regular time, first and third Tuesdays of the month. And so, we wanted to have this meeting be as few items as possible, and we're gonna really make the laser focus be on our FY twenty-six budget. It's a big bit of business, we don't need to resolve anything tonight, and so it will be the beginnings of that process that will last several months. But I just wanna let you know that I heard your feedback, and we tried our best, and here we are. And then finally, I wanna just make my regular reminder about how to participate in this meeting. Everyone's welcome here, we welcome your participation, your engagement, it helps us make good decisions, I think. And so, in order to participate in this meeting, all you have to do is raise your hand at an appropriate moment. When I ask for participation, I'll recognize you. If I actually recognize you, I'll say your name. If I don't know your name, I'll, I'll ask for it. And then you can have up to three minutes to speak on the agenda item in question. If you're on Zoom, you just raise your Zoom hand, and the same things apply. We'd like to have the meeting be a productive and civil experience for everybody, and so making sure that we listen to one another, we don't speak over one another, and we act in a, um, a manner befitting this venue, okay? And that is all I have for chairs remarks. John, mind if there's comments?
Yes, thanks, Daniel. I wanna just second everything you said about Chief Howard. We're very sad to see him go, but also happy for him in his retirement, which was well-earned, and Chief Howard has always been not only a great leader in the Fire Department, but also within the organization as a whole, and helping us all as a team be better and provide better service across the town, so really appreciate Chief Howard. A few announcements first, the town's budget open house will be on next Tuesday, November twelfth, from four to six P M. at Brooks Memorial Library. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but this is a great opportunity to discuss the budget directly with town staff. More information about the budget process can be found at brattleboro.gov backslash fytwentysixbudget. The Planning Department is hosting a second public forum regarding the Canal Street Corridor Plan on Thursday, November fourteenth, from six to eight P M. here in the Select Board Meeting Room at two thirty Main Street, and there will be a Zoom option also for that meeting. The plan is to make enhancements to Canal Street from the Hinsdale Bridge out to Exit One. For more information, including an overview of the first public forum on this topic, please visit brattleboro.gov backslash projects. At six P M., sixty-eight percent of Brattleboro voters had put their ballots in. I wanted to thank all of the poll workers who are all really working, working really hard to make this election happen, and also wanna thank the voters who are exercising their right to vote and being pleasant along the way. I really appreciate that. Polls are open until seven P M. tonight at the American Legion, so if you wanna get that sixty-eight percent up higher, please go out and cast your vote. If people wanna drop their mailed ballots off, they should bring them to the polls until seven P M., and that's all I have.
Great, thank you, John. Select Board members with comments and/or committee reports. Liz?
So, with daylight saving and winter coming on, I seem to every year implore people who are dog-walking and otherwise outside on the street to wear reflective clothing and bring a flashlight, because they cannot be seen. And there's a tendency of people to walk their black dog with their black coat on in the dark, and that can't be seen, and it's very dangerous, and please pay attention.
Great, thank you. Other members with comments or committee reports? Okay, moving on. So, the next item on our agenda is public participation. So, this is for members of the public to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda. You could also request that an item be pulled from our consent agenda for consideration. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Dick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dick DeGray, District Eight, I believe, is where I voted today, so I hope it goes through. I wanna take a minute to thank some people. I came out of semi-retirement from doing the flowers and did them up in West Brattleboro, but I, I couldn't have done it without the help of the people that I'm gonna mention. They were a critical part of doing that, and certainly the people have enjoyed that. First and foremost, Ahmed Rashad, Rashards, Rashard Flowers, and Mary and Mike Casey, who were very helpful in assisting with watering and changing out the flowers, and then we'll be picking up the baskets tomorrow off the bridge, but without them, I would not have been doing flowers, because I made it clear that when people asked me if I didn't have any help, I couldn't do it. So, kudos to them, and I appreciate their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to be heard on something that's not on tonight's agenda? I think we have somebody on Zoom, his name I can't quite see from here.
Somebody on Zoom named Chester Jersey.
All right. You're recognized, if you could just introduce yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
And yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening to the town of Brattleboro Select Board. My name is Chester Jersey, and I'm one of the newest members of Brattleboro's Common Sense, also known as B C S. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. As most of us know, today's a national election day, and it is a democracy's will and hope that those who are eligible to vote have done their patriotic duty. However, while many are able to vote, some were not able to. I'm referring to many sixteen-year-olds who have once again not participated in this federal election. Although six cities in Maryland, in addition to the only city in Vermont to enfranchise sixteen-year-olds, Brattleboro were able to participate in local elections, no sixteen-year-old was able to weigh in on the presidential election. Thanks to the passage of Brattleboro's Youth Vote Amendment and the bill's unique features, it not only allowed youth the ability to vote, but a greater say in local government. I want to personally thank those who are listening and who support the amendment. Thanks to you, local youth have been empowered, enriching both their lives and democracy as a whole, but there's more work to do. Young people outside Brattleboro do have a voice and a stake in our country's future as well. At this time, there's currently a national bill to lower the federal voting age to sixteen, as authored by Representative Grace Ming of New York City, called House Joint Resolution Sixteen. I and other supporters of lowering the voting age across the country have been working on bringing awareness to this bill, which is set to expire at the end of this congressional term in January two thousand and twenty-five. Towards that end, I, B C S, and other youth supporters are collaborating on a local Awareness Day event that will be happening next Saturday, November sixteenth, to bring more awareness to this bill in hopes of empowering more young people across the country, like Brattleboro has done. I encourage those interested in participating as attendees or as volunteers to reach out to me through the Brattleboro website, brattleborocomonssense.org, for more information and for any additional questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. John, could you just give us a summary of what's on it?
You bet. There's five items on the consent agenda tonight. If you approve this agenda, you'll be approving a first-class liquor license, outside consumption permit, and annual entertainment license for North Chair Brewing, formerly, at the former, formerly the Wetstone Brewery at thirty-nine Frost Street. You'll be authorizing the library to apply for a five thousand dollar grant from the John Henry Eldred Jr. Foundation to expand the e-audio, audiobook collection for youth. You'll be approving the purchase of a replacement gas compressor for the wastewater treatment plant from Motion Industries for a cost of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. You'll be approving the request from the Brattleboro Chamber of Commerce to suspend parking fees for the Holidays Event downtown on Friday, December sixth, and Saturday, December seventh, and you'll be approving a statutorily required warning of a special representative town meeting in response to a certified petition to reconsider adoption of the acceptable community conduct ordinance.
Thanks, John. Board members, anyone wish to pull something from the agenda? Okay, then I'll take a motion.
I motion.
Peter?
I motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, he has made a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes five zero. I'm gonna move on to old business. We have one item to talk about tonight, and I think our town attorney is maybe the person that's gonna kick this off? Or John, did you wanna tee this up?
I think, yeah, I could tee it up. So, la, at your last meeting, you considered a first and third-class liquor license and an outdoor consumption permit and an annual, annual entertainment license, all in one package for Marigold at, on Main Street, and there was quite a bit of discussion around that, and I think we, we got maybe a little bit off track on some, some requirements that you were putting on the entertainment license and extending them beyond that. When Bob, when the town attorney heard, heard about what we did at that meeting, he, he had some clarifications that perhaps he'd, he'd help enlighten us about now, so.
Great.
All right, thank you. So, with regard to liquor licenses, for first and third-class liquor licenses, the hours of operation can be by, and this is by statute, from eight A M. to two A M. the next morning, okay? As a local Board of Liquor Commissioners, you have the authority to condition your approval of a liquor license on ordinances that you have, and typically those ordinances are either entertainment ordinances or nuisance ordinances. So, you can condition, condition that upon the approval of the ordinance regulating entertainment or public nuisances that has been adopted by the town, is what Title Seven, one sixty-seven states. So, as, when we went back and looked at your motion, everything kinda got put together in that you were really regulating the hours that a, an organism or business could serve liquor, and that you really can't do, but you can condition it on the, being in compliance with an entertainment license. So, if you had complaints, and I wasn't there at that last meeting, but with regard to noise and disturbances, et cetera, where the entertainment license, if you wanted to condition that, that entertainment stops at a particular time, so that there's less noise, less nuisance, et cetera. If there's a violation of that, then that gives you the ability to bring the liquor license, licensee in and revoke it, suspend it, et cetera. So, that's your, your hook to be able to regulate that and suspend or revoke that license. So, it's in the organization or the business's best interest to abide by the entertainment license, because that's the condition, and if they do that, then they're safe with regard to their hours of operation going till two A M. If they're not, the whole thing can be revoked, and that's quite costly for businesses. So, it was, so the way we looked at this is what I think we're asking you to do is to issue the entertainment license with conditions, and then issue the liquor license conditioned upon compliance of the entertainment license.
Okay, thanks, Bob, and thanks, John.
Yep.
So, we overstepped our boundaries, we misunderstood our boundaries, and that's okay, we all make mistakes. I appreciate the prompt legal advice, and the business in question hasn't been hindered too much by this misstep, and so we're actually looking to ratify the issuance of an entertainment license, et cetera, et cetera. Board members with questions, comments?
I have comment, and then I'd like to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I, I, I'm happy that this information was brought to our attention, but it's really strange with six years on the board that we never knew this, and I, I think it calls to mind the inability of a municipality to regulate liquor licenses in our town because of the state law is just another instance of overabundant state control over our actions, and I would ask our legislators to look into that as a, an act of, of, what do you call it?
Local control?
Local control?
Yeah.
And so, in the meantime, I will propose the following motion. To ratify the issuance of an entertainment license for Marigold located at one fifty-seven Main Street with the condition that entertainment cease by twelve A M. on Friday and Saturday nights, and by eleven P M. on all other nights of the week, and to ratify the issuance of a liquor license with a general condition that the licensee comply with the town's entertainment license granted to the licensee.
Great, thanks, Liz. Any discussion on the motion that Liz just made? Okay. Members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Yep. And if you could just introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm Mark Baxter, live on Main Street at the top of the Paramount Building, and, which is adjacent to the River Garden. I wanted you to be aware that the Paramount Building and the Hooker Dunham Building create a horseshoe in the back of the River Garden, right around the deck and rear doors, and amplifying live music until midnight in a densely populated area of town is inconsistent with the use of that property by other people that live there. As it stands now, you're asking them to go ahead and amplify that music from their back rear doors in an historic area of town. I wanted you to be, take into account, please, other bars that you've granted licenses to in town, which include Plated, which closes at ten, Midnight, which as its name implies, closes at midnight, but they have no outdoor seating, they have no outdoor deck, and no outdoor serving. Snow Republic closes at nine. The Tower is open late, but it has no outdoor seating, no outdoor deck, and no outdoor drinking. There was a controversy with River Garden when it first opened. It ended up being agreed that they would end entertainment at ten P M. I'm asking you to consider the same on this entertainment license you're considering. I'm asking you to consider the same on this entertainment license you're considering, and I'm asking you to require that their rear doors be closed when there's amplified music and entertainment at the venue. Thank you.
Thanks. Any of the members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item? Okay. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, seeing none. Liz has made a motion to ratify the issuance of the entertainment license for Marigold located at one fifty-seven Main Street with the condition that entertainment cease by twelve AM on Friday and Saturday nights, and by eleven PM all other nights of the week, and to ratify the issuance of the liquor licenses with the general condition that the licensee comply with the town's entertainment license granted to the licensee. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes four zero, France. Do you wish to vote on this?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hand and say aye. That's one against, so it passes four one. And we will move on to new business, which is the FY twenty-six general fund base budget discussion. John, I'm gonna kick this over to you. We have a big memo here, and hopefully folks who are with us tonight have that in front of them or have access to it. You can access it on the town website, and if you're in this room and you don't have it, there's copies, I think, on the table just there. And so this is big, important business, and will occupy a lot of our next several months. So tonight is the beginning of that. We don't need to solve anything tonight, we're just kicking things off.
Yep, okay, thanks, Daniel. So what this item is about is the base budget, what we call the base budget, which is what it would take to continue services in FY twenty-six the same way we were providing them in FY twenty-five. So that's sort of our starting point in this budget process, is just to continue doing what we've been doing, what would that take? So within this budget are no policy decisions made by staff, no policy proposals made by staff. It's all just like what the board has already approved or what we've done in the past, but what it would cost to do that. So the process, the budget conversations that we're gonna have over the next couple of months are gonna be about, is this, does this continue to be the suite of services that the town wants to provide, or do you wanna do something different? And so tonight is kicking that off with, just to continue what we've been doing, what would that take? It's this longer process, it will have a couple of components. One, I think, would first, or I would propose that it would be a discovery kind of period where we're trying to understand what policies this is implementing, and to start to consider if there are any changes that the select board might wanna make in order to put together your budget that you wanna bring to representative town meeting. And then the other part will be decision-making, and that will come along probably in around the January timeframe where you will have to make the hard decisions about what goes into a final budget recommendation. So what we found in putting together these projections and trying to understand what budget it would take to continue services as we've had them is that, you know, costs to run a municipal government continue to go up, just like we're seeing with healthcare, just like we're seeing with schools, just like we're seeing with real estate and vehicles, you name it, everything, costs have been going up, and the municipal budget is no exception to that. We also have to contend with those rising costs that everyone's seeing in their daily life, but to deliver the services that the town has been used to having will take some increased cost. So as we did that projection, we found that in order to do that, it will be about a nine percent increase in the cost of expenditures. That's our projection. To continue the services that we've been delivering will be about a nine percent increase in cost. And that, very importantly, does not include a solid waste decision, because that policy has not been set yet. The only thing that we knew going into projecting this base budget was that the current approach is not available to us anymore. We cannot just continue the budget with a slight increase like we have over the last ten years. We're in a different scenario now, as you know, from our solid waste conversations, which will likely continue at your second regular meeting in November. So the big areas that are different in this FY twenty-six budget are the Downtown Safety Action Plan, which we're currently in the process of implementing, and that was approved by you a number of meetings ago. Other big sort of increases or changes in this budget are capital needs and benefits, and we can talk about those in detail in a minute. Unfortunately, this nine percent increase in expenditures, which is, which everyone is seeing, is happening in a climate where we're projecting that our revenues will be down. We're expecting in the FY twenty-six budget that we will have reduced revenues, which will need to be picked up by something in order to cover the expenditures. And in the case of the base budget, our assumption is to do that with a property tax rate. So the projected revenues that we're seeing down are things like the pay-as-you-throw bag revenues, about three hundred thousand dollars there. We know from our negotiations with Casella that that is not an approach that will be able to fit into their view of how solid waste should be handled and what is being offered to us as options. So that's one revenue reduction. The other is, we're not expecting any fund balance, which we have used in the past couple of budgets to keep the property tax rate down, but we're not projecting a surplus going into FY twenty-six that would be available to handle that. And that is for a number of reasons, but primarily because our long-term surplus that we saw in past budgets is not expected to be available to us due to the excellent recruitment that's going on in the police department primarily. We also are seeing in the revenues, we're taking a continued conservative approach on ambulance reimbursement fees for service, because we have not seen, we don't have the data yet to know whether we should anticipate that being higher than what the kind of modeling that we did when that decision was made last year. So we're kinda keeping that very conservative. We did add a little bit to that budget revenue, expecting, because of a change in state law, which will allow for charges to be made based on non-transports. So the combined impact of expenditures up and revenues down means that in this base budget, to deliver the same services will cost about a hundred and seventy dollars per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value more in FY twenty-six than this year in FY twenty-five. So to, if you were, and I'm not proposing that you just endorse this particular budget, there's obviously a lot of decisions that have to be made, but if you were to just proceed with this base budget, the median home in Brattleboro would have a tax increase of three hundred dollars over the course of the FY twenty-six tax year. So for three hundred more dollars, we could continue to do the services that we have been doing, plus incorporate the approved changes like the Downtown Safety Action Plan. That does not include the solid waste, which is still up to you to decide how we wanna address that. So if you do nothing to change the base budget, it'll be a little bit less than a dollar a day increase to the median taxpayer to implement this sort of a budget. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the base budget assumptions. These are the assumptions that go into building a base budget, and if you look at page three of the memo or page forty-nine of the packet, this is what I'm gonna be talking from. And right now, what we're assuming in this base budget, again, continuing services, what it would cost, is the current service levels and staffing would be consistent with FY twenty-five. The exception, of course, as I mentioned, is the approved Downtown Safety Action Plan, and another exception is that the solid waste solution is not in this base budget. So those were some critical assumptions going into this. Another critical assumption was that personnel costs would be projected in this base budget based on approved collective bargaining agreements and level-funded cost of living. So last year, the board and the RTM approved a four percent cost of living. We assumed in this base budget that that would be level-funded, and that the agreements that we have on the four collective bargaining agreements, which we're in the second year of, would also be upheld, and we wouldn't be going back to the bargaining table. Another assumption was that services and supplies would increase at about a six percent rate, and that's based on our knowledge of where a lot of the costs for things like fuel, electricity, small tools, parts, everything, is running at about a six percent increase. That's what we're projecting into FY twenty-six. The base budget built out the human services, consistent with RTM guidance that you had back in March, sustainability fund transfers, consistent with previous select board guidance, and a capital transfer, consistent with projects and equipment in our long-term capital plans. On revenues, the assumptions were that sales and rooms and meals tax would be projected at a five percent increase over FY twenty-four actuals. That is our best guess at what those revenues were doing. We also, as I mentioned, took conservative estimates on all the other fees for services. So if you look at page four of the memo or page fifty in the packet, there's a table, Table Two, which runs down the expenditures in the base budget at a high level. And if you look at that, so the expenditure category is on the left, the amount that we spent in FY, or that we budgeted in FY twenty-five is the second column. What we're calling the base budget for FY twenty-six is in the third column, and the change there, and that's the kind of the significant thing here, is so, for example, we're projecting staffing to be consistent with collective bargaining agreements will be up about one point one million, or a ten point six percent increase. That would be at a cost in the sixth column there of an estimated nine hundred and thirty-one dollars per hundred thousand dollars for, to cover the cost of staffing in the base budget. Benefits in the next line are up about a million for three hundred and ninety-four dollars per hundred thousand. Department expenses up about a hundred thousand. Services and supplies in the base budget are down, seven hundred thousand, and that is the removal of what we know is not a viable solid waste solution. So that is addressed in the budget alternates instead. Fund transfers are up about seven hundred thousand. That is, I believe, all in the capital fund transfer line. And then debt services down about a million, and, I mean, about a hundred thousand, excuse me, and that is because we continue to pay off principal on our debt, so the amount that we're paying keeps notching down a little bit every year. So the total change in expenditures is, as I mentioned before, about nine percent, and is a total of around two point one million dollar increase in expenditures, again, without a solid waste solution. And so that, the estimated cost per hundred thousand would be about, would be just over two thousand dollars to cover that increased expenditure. Next thing I'm going to point to is our projections in the base budget around revenues, and that is described in Table Three on page six of the memo and page fifty-two of the packet. Here, again, we have the revenue category, we have what was in the FY twenty-five budget, what we're projecting in the FY twenty-six base budget, the change and the percentage change. And so the big things here are, because we have a reduced fees for service of about three hundred thousand dollars and a reduced use of fund balance of about three hundred thousand, that forces the property tax line to increase higher than the nine percent increase in expenditures to about a two point six million dollar increase in property taxes, is also offset a little bit by a hundred thousand dollar projected increase in other revenues. So the budget alternates that I've been referring to several times are listed in Attachment D of your memo, which is the last page of the packet. And in here, in here are five different budget alternates that we're putting forth at this point to start the conversation. Of course, if the board is interested in identifying additional budget alternates, we can add those in here, or if members in the public want to suggest different budget alternates, we can also address those. The five items on the budget alternates are, first of all, kinda going from tax rate reduction to tax rate increase in this order of magnitude. The first is, you could consider an additional cost of living adjustment, reducing the cost of living from four percent in the base budget down to three and a half percent staff-wide, which would be a savings of about fifty-five and a half thousand dollars. We have also a proposal on an adjustment to how the select board meetings are run, moving from ASL to closed caption, which could save you eleven thousand dollars in the base budget. We have a request from SEVT to increase the town's contribution to the mover of, it's actually five to eight thousand, and here we put the higher number, eight thousand. And then we have the two solid waste options, if, the two that the board has been thinking about since our last presentation on this, the solid waste option A, which would be the town not providing trash collection and disposal services, but doing every other week recycling and weekly organics. This would be approximately nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand alternate back into the base budget, which would have a tax rate impact of another five point five percent on the property tax rate, or an estimated impact per hundred thousand of assessed value of seventy-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. The alternative alternate that you could select instead of that is the solid waste solution B, which is every other week trash, every other week recycling, and weekly organics collection and disposal. The high-end cost there is one point four million, which would be an eight percent adjustment to the property tax rate. So combined with a fourteen percent, that would be something like a twenty-two percent impact on the tax rate. And the estimated impact per hundred thousand of assessed value would be a hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents, which is probably slightly lower than the cost of people going out on their own and finding solid waste solutions, as you discussed at your last meeting. So that is, those are the budget alternates on the table that the staff provided you, of course. If you have other areas that we wanna explore, we can do that, and we can add to this list of budget alternates for you to make decisions about as we go through the budget process. I did wanna mention that we have an online budget book, which Finance Director Kim Frost has worked tirelessly on getting that up and really providing a lot of the information in an easily digestible way. There is a link in the memo to where that online budget book lies on the town website, but it is essentially, you can find it by going to the projects page for the FY twenty-six budget development process. And there is also some guidance in the memo on how to find certain elements of that online budget book. Finally, I wanna talk about next steps. So we have several questions which we're proposing to the board for you to consider tonight. Those or others, if you want, I'll step through those in a minute. But there, again, Budget Open House is next Tuesday at four PM at the Brooks Memorial Library. That's a great opportunity for you and the public to talk with department heads. to talk with department heads about what continuing services looks like, what other alternatives might be out there. Uh, the next regular meeting of the board in November, uh, we will, we're planning to, uh, hopefully review feedback that, uh, we have at the Budget Open House and start in on any follow-ups from this meeting. So if there are areas that you want to explore further, that can help us build an agenda for that meeting and then subsequent meetings in, um, December. So I think, uh, we, we'll continue the discovery process through that November meeting and into December and try to get a shared understanding of any additional budget alternates, whether it be they up or down. Uh, feedback opportunities for people, uh, in town are at the open house, at your select board meetings in November and December, and at the RTM focus groups that we plan to have in December. After that, if the select board wishes, uh, we, the staff can bring back a final budget recommendation, if you want to have us make a recommendation, uh, for you to review, discuss, and potentially take action on in January ahead of the, uh, March RTM. So tonight, uh, we're looking for a few things, or suggesting a few things for you guys to discuss. One is any feedback that you might have on the base budget assumptions, like, again, as a base budget, a continuation of services, are these assumptions that we went, that we put into this the correct ones, or should we be thinking differently there? Certainly, any clarifying questions on the materials presented in the packet or what I talked about tonight, um, we're happy to try to address anything there. Then, uh, I think really importantly, if you had a discussion and could identify policy areas for, uh, to consider for potential savings that could provide a roadmap to upcoming meetings, I think that would be a very good, uh, conversation potentially to have. Like, if you want to get the three hundred dollar a year median home tax increase down to something less than that, three hundred dollars, two hundred, whatever, you know, wherever you wanted to get that down to, or if you're fine with that, or you even wanted to see an increase for things that you're not seeing in this budget, um, such as the pool obviously was left out of this, there are other things that have been discussed that are not in the space budget, uh, or in the budget alternates at this point. Then we could, uh, list those out and use that as a roadmap. So that's pretty much, um, the presentation that I had tonight. So I, I guess we could get in, turn it back over to you, Daniel, if there are any questions or, um, or anything. Oh, the last thing is, uh, the budget process. If there's anything in the budget process that I've described that you approved back in August that you want to change at this point, this would be a, a good time to address that as well.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
It's a lot, it's a lot of work. I appreciate all of the work that went into developing this base budget. It was work that was across the whole of town's leadership team, and so I want to thank Kim Frost, Finance Director, who's here with us tonight, as well as the Town Manager's Office and all of the department heads, uh, in building this base budget. So like what, I would actually like you to humor me, and I'd like to take these questions here methodically, um, because there's a lot, and I don't want us to get lost. So why don't we start with base budget assumptions? Feedback on base budget assumptions, and I will go select board, public, back to select board, then move on. So, feedback on the base budget assumptions, Franz.
I have a question about, um, the base budget.
Thank you, Daniel.
Base budget assumptions?
Yeah, so, um, a couple of meetings ago, we added a substantial sum to the FY twenty-five budget, uh, for the, uh, Downtown Safety Action Plan. Are, are those additions to the FY twenty-five budget included in the FY twenty-five budget numbers here?
They're included in the FY twenty-six base budget, yes.
Well, we, we did, we made that decision as well, but in terms of comparing FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six, we added money to the FY twenty-five budget, and I'm wondering if that is already in the FY twenty-five figures?
No, these, uh, the figures in here are the FY twenty-five approved budget, and so, um, that's, those are the numbers that we were working off of. What we're doing there is we're spending into our reserve to, to do those, so it's, it wasn't really part of the, your ultimate approved budget, sorry.
We didn't add to the budget, we just spent money that was unbudgeted.
Okay, well, slice that linguistically how we please, but, um, so, but there's no assumption in here then that we would make up those funds as part of the FY twenty-six budget to restore our reserve funds to the level that we've historically had them at?
That's correct.
So that would be an additional amount if we wanted to maintain our reserve funds.
That could be a budget alternate discussion if you wanted to explore that area.
Let's help. I think also, just a kind of more general point, one of the things that I hope we'll get out of tonight is we'll start to, um, you know, develop a list of questions, of areas that we want to consider further. We're not going to resolve any of these issues tonight, it's going to take several months for us to work through this. Um, and so surfacing those questions right now is a great thing for us to be doing, so that's a really good one to start us off with, Franz. Any other questions or comments on the assumptions underlying this base budget? Richard?
It says that there are no, no new staff positions, except for the Downtown Safety Action Plan. Wasn't there a position created for IT person? Is that a new position?
Yes, um, so, the base budget continues service levels at current full staffing capacities in all departments consistent with FY twenty-five. So that additional staff position that you're talking about was approved in the FY twenty-five budget, so we assumed that it would continue on into FY twenty-six.
Okay, great. Uh, other questions about assumptions for the base budget, Liz?
Just, well, first of all, I'd like to say that I view this process as the first step, and, um, second, I also feel that, um, the select board role and the town manager role needs to be thoroughly examined, because while we are pre, are ultimately voting on and presenting this budget to town management, um, a lot of the nuts and bolts of staffing decisions are the responsibility of the town manager, so what guidance that we would give to the town manager in terms of retrenchment is ultimately something that he will decide and work on and bring back to us, so that we might have, um, suggestions, but I'm looking forward to the time, just as we did in last year's budget, where the town manager comes back with recommendations that he and the staff have selected to do. And towards that, I would just make a couple of suggestions. First of all, the, um, that there's a relationship really between the cost of living adjustment and whether or not staff reductions are necessary. And so I would think that, um, retrenchment in the COLA, uh, beyond what's projected as an alternate might be, uh, uh, recommended. And, um, I also think in terms of examining everything and retrenchment, that the, um, two percent for human services be looked at and scaled back. I also think that, um, it's a good idea to not address the pool at this time, and I have more ideas, but that's, that's for starters on the base budget assumption.
Thanks, Liz. So, yes, we are just talking about assumptions, thank you. So the COLA that is kind of baked into these assumptions is a COLA, uh, cost of living adjustment, um, of four percent?
Four percent, which you did in FY twenty-five. It's continued on.
And so what I'm hearing is, we would like to have a discussion about what else we could consider with regards COLAs, and presumably with a lower number. Uh, and then the human services assumption is based on an RTM guidance that it's a certain percentage of the general fund budget, and that is RTM guidance. It's not law. Um, and so we could take a look at doing something different there, and I, and I would caution that, like, when we do that, I can guarantee that we will then relitigate that at RTM. But that's okay, that's how it works. Cool. Anyone else got questions on the assumptions that underlay, underpin this base budget? No? Okay, I will just add one. I feel like the capital planning, and maybe I'm misremembering, but I feel like we used to do more of a kind of long-term financial plan in the spring, um, that led into some capital planning, and I think in our next budget cycle, we should really consider whether there's something to be done in public around that. I know that this is happening definitely at the staff level, um, but having an opportunity to talk about it in public with the select board and the members of the public giving feedback would be helpful.
Yeah, um, staff are getting in a better position to have that conversation with the implementation of the OpenGov, um, software, where we're getting all of the long-term capital needs loaded into the system. We're not quite there yet, it's, it takes a long time to get all that information, um, acquired and then entered in, and then be able to do planning off of it. So we're, we're looking forward to having that work done, and it's a high priority for, uh, the staff that are, uh, responsible for all those assets.
Great, thank you, John. Members of the public with questions about the assumptions that go into this base budget? David?
David Lovemark, District Nine, and I'm sorry, I can't recall the exact terminology, but there was, uh, an issue that we've talked about a couple of times in the past, which was surface management, rainwater, I can't remember.
Stormwater utility.
Stormwater utility.
Stormwater utility. So this is a very grim story you've had to tell this evening. And that stormwater utility was intended to generate, we never got any idea of how much it would generate, but the idea was a substantial amount. So what is the progress on that project?
That's a great question, thanks, David.
I applaud you for that question.
We love the stormwater utility conversation here. John?
So, first of all, that would not likely affect the general fund, which, um, this, this relates to, so I'm not sure it's Germaine, but, um, but, uh, we, we have been, we have been talking with legislators about that, um, and the, the real, really the problem we have is a lack of capacity in the, uh, Public Works Department to develop a program like that, it's quite significant. Uh, we, we just don't have the people to, to, uh, fully research that and, and put together, uh, a program. We're not, also not sure that the opportunities in Brattleboro are quite as good as, as some other, you know, the other, the other several, three, maybe three communities that have implemented a stormwater utility in Vermont, um, but, you know, we're, we're definitely open to it and are continuing to explore the possibility.
Great, thank you. Um, let's see if other people want to speak first.
Follow up on this?
Real brief, real brief.
So I, I gather what you're saying is that any money from the, uh, Storm Management Fund would go back to Utility Fund? Is there any reason why that then couldn't be transferred to the general fund or be used for capital expenses?
So, fair question, I think it's a question for another day, we don't have the stormwater utility right now, staff are investigating it, as you just heard. Other questions about the assumptions underpinning the base budget? Dick?
Talking about, uh, the collective bargaining agreements, uh, there are, uh, department heads and, uh, a multitude of employees are not covered under collective bargaining agreements. I would ask that the payrolls for all department heads be frozen at this current level. I think that would go a long way with easing the pain. I do agree with Liz, the COLA for social security people is going to be two point five this year. So regardless of what you do, I can't call social security up and say, I need a, a twelve percent raise because the taxes in my town are going up. I was a little confused, uh, I went down and looked at the, uh, revenue line item for, uh, rooms and meals, and I believe you said it was in there at five percent. When I get there, I'll tell you what page it's on.
So page two of attachment A.
I didn't want it to be right in front of me, but it was in there at one percent, a one percent change? And you were saying it's going to be in there at point five percent?
Yeah, John, you want to speak to it?
Only six hundred and, what is it, six hundred and fifty-one dollar increase, that's what you're projecting?
Yeah. Do you have any other questions, Dick, and then I'll ask John to talk about that?
Did, a question, did we receive our first check yet, which is due right around now for the first quarter?
Okay, thank you. John, you want to speak to the rooms and meals tax?
So, as I, I mentioned earlier in my, in my remarks, the, uh, rooms and meals tax and the sales tax are projected at a five percent increase over FY twenty-four actuals. So the FY, what you're looking at, uh, Dick, is an increase from the FY twenty-five budget to the FY twenty-six base budget, which is lower, it's point one percent for rooms and meals and two point one percent from sales taxes. But we really, we projected, our assumption was to project off of receipts that were known that we have, so that we don't kind of get out ahead of ourselves a year, a year ahead of time. So it's just being a little more conservative than, um, doing a five percent on the FY twenty-five budget.
Okay, fair. And Dick's question about, um, receipts from EMS, transport revenue is like, have we had any yet?
I, I think we have had, started to get some receipts in, I don't know the amounts, we will report out on that at the next, uh, financial update or, um, fire department update.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess, just to kind of flag that, um, one of the things that Dick was talking about there is about non-union staff salaries, particularly department head salaries, and you're saying that you would like to see us consider department head salaries, um, with no increase this year. And so that's just naming that, putting it on a list somewhere, um, we can come back to that later on.
Is that something the board wants to add to the list of potential budget alternates?
Yes.
Good, all right. And I think, I want to just point out, one second, I want to just point out here that we're not in a, a phase right now where we're saying, wow, we're committed to X, Y, and Z, we're saying, boy, this is a budget with a hefty increase, and we are looking at some ways to mitigate that. Once we have that information, we'll have, as John said, numerous hard decisions ahead of us, and I'm not rushing to make any of those hard decisions right now. So just because we're saying we'll put it on a list, doesn't mean we're saying that's what we're going to do, just to be super clear about that.
I appreciate that out loud confirmation of that.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, John.
Just to add something to that, Daniel, and that is, um, it, it, so each thing that you add is a significant amount of staff work to try to bring that out and understand it, so I, I would just, you may want to prioritize.
Right, so maybe when we've got a big list, we can kind of check back in and be like, okay, which of these things are, like, critical? Uh, that's a good point, thank you. Let's move on from assumptions unless there's any more assumption clarification. Dick?
Well, my point with the salaries, uh, the town manager is in for a nine percent increase.
Yeah, I get your point.
The fire chief is in for an eight point one percent. The, uh, police chief is in for eight point two percent. Human service director is in for eight point four percent. The finance director is in for four point two percent. Public works is in for six point four percent.
Right, I, I understand your point.
Park and Back is in for four percent.
Dick, I understand your point.
The professors is in for four point five percent. Planning is in for three point eight, town clerk, three point nine.
Uh-huh, thank you.
And library is four point two.
Thank you, you just spoke.
And so I was talking about a call of a two point five percent increase, let's keep it in perspective.
Okay, and so, yeah, you're welcome. I want to just point out that, like, we're going to have plenty of time to dig into the details over the next couple of months, and so we don't need to do all of that work right now. And so your point about department head salaries was taken, is put on a list, the board is saying, I'm going to just finish, Dick, if you don't mind.
I don't want to have a back and forth, Mr. Germaine.
And I would like you to sit down.
But you know what, if it wasn't for Franz, nobody else on that board raised a hand and But you know what? If it wasn't for Franz, nobody else on that board raised a hand and said, we should take a look at this, which is very concerning to me.
Okay, your concern is noted.
Can I address that? I literally thought we had a consensus of at least three people agreeing to that.
If you wish to.
So I don't know where that came from. Just because a physical hand doesn't go up, doesn't mean we're not in line with your thinking.
Yeah, so let's just bring it back a little bit for a second. So everyone in this room, and people who are not in this room who contributed to this budget, understands that this budget is very, very, very challenging. Okay? Everyone in this room is committed to trying to find the right sweet spot between delivering the level of service that this town needs and the tax rate that the taxpayer can handle. Okay? Everyone is committed to that. What I am committed to and what I think my fellow board members are committed to is a process over several months where we'll explore the ins and outs of that and we'll make many hard decisions. So starting off with a kind of adversarial approach, not the right way to go about it. Let us start off with an approach where we're saying, boy, this is a hard one to swallow. Let's look in various areas. Okay? And that's what I'm hoping we'll get out of tonight. By the end of it, we'll say, we're going to look in these different areas. And then we're going to make a plan for the next several meetings to explore them. And as John pointed out, each one of them will probably require significant staff time. So it's important that we prioritize of those ones which we think, you know, we really need to hear about soonest. Okay? So let's bring it back to a sort of cordial and exploratory kind of tone. And if you don't mind, I'd like to move on to this next question.
You said you were going to bring it back to the board on the assumptions.
Oh, fair enough. Yeah, yeah. Excuse me for losing my composure. Yeah.
Well, I would just throw in that I appreciate those remarks you just made. I think that's really an important perspective. But there is a sense, I've been sort of, you know, I've been living with these numbers now for a few days. And there's a sense in which this base budget is not quite a true base budget. Because it doesn't include the solid waste that is a part of our current level of services. We're not including that as a cost that we're looking at as part of the base budget. And to really be a base budget, I think we're talking about not cutting services. So that would mean including some kind of solid waste option. Having been part of the solid waste discussions here, it seems to me that what's going to happen, and I don't want to do something prematurely, but the momentum has been in the direction of maintaining our current level of services, which is very close to the alternate, the budget alternate that's in here with a $1.4 million price tag attached to it. I mean, that's really the level of service that we have now. So if this is going to be considered a base budget that includes solid waste, I really think that needs to be somehow reflected in our thinking. And the way that gets reflected in my thinking is that if we're looking at a 14% tax increase in the, you know, in this base budget, and we add in the 8% tax increase that would correspond to that solid waste proposal, we're really looking at a 22% budget, base budget increase. At least in the sense that I'm thinking about a base budget. So I just want to mention that as we're, you know, dealing with the assumptions of the budget, that that's kind of one of my assumptions.
Yep. Okay. Let's move on. So clarifying questions regarding the base budget, base budget alternates, solid waste is one of them, significant one, and the preliminary capital projects and equipment replacement. Clarifying questions around that from the select board, first of all. Okay. I'll kick off. So I think it's important to note that the, you know, and I think you addressed it in your memo, is the main drivers of increases here are the downtown safety action plan, which the select board considered and adopted during, what, September? Some of which included an unbudgeted amount for this current budget cycle that we're in. And some of which made a commitment to having that be in the FY '26 budget, which is what we're looking at today. And so I think it will be important for us to have a visit with the police department to hear more about the downtown safety action plan, to hear about whether the scope and size and cost of that plan is something that we still wish to move forward with. And also maybe hearing about like the implications or the potential implications for like doing something different. Right? We want to weigh both of those things. And so I'm not saying that we need to go back and undo that decision, but I'm saying that we might need to have some further public consideration of it. I'm seeing some people nodding. Yeah. Liz?
It's always great to hear from our police chief. But I feel very strongly that that was a decision that needed to be made, that we need to act. And that how long that, that, that this effort continues is something that the select board will continue to monitor. But I have no interest in reexamining that. There's many other things in the budget that can be looked at. But that decision freshly made is, I'm still very positive about, and I think this town desperately needs.
Okay. And I understand where you're coming from. Go ahead, Franz.
I agree that it's a very important program. It's something that we're committed to. But I would also be interested in hearing if there, you know, you know, how much bang for the buck do we get if we made it somewhat smaller, potentially? And I would very much like to hear the chief's thoughts on that.
Okay. Richard, Peter?
I said this when we worked on that original plan before, but we didn't do it within the context of the budget. We weren't looking at it. Now we have a context. It's a different time, maybe a short time, but I would argue that we need to review this now within the context of the base budget.
Okay, Peter?
So while we're reviewing a potential change to this plan, do we suppose that the reason this plan was deployed will be reconsidering their actions? I think that we need to kind of hold the line on what we agreed to, as hard a pill as it is to swallow. Right now, the people have been seeing a really positive change in our downtown. They approach me a couple of times a day thanking this, this body for the work that we did there to improve our downtown situation. So to pull back in any way, shape, or form is not a good look.
Yeah, thank you. And again, I want to just point out that what we're trying to do here is identify like sort of broad areas in this budget that we need to sort of take a close look at. And I think what's important is that this board gets to hear more information, gets to kick a few things around, public gets to do the same thing, we get to get some feedback. The feedback might say, you know what? Yeah, that's a significant increase to our general fund and we think it's worth it. And it will just affirm that that decision that was made in September was the right one. Okay? Or maybe not, but I think we need to have that discussion. And I think, you know, so the other area that I want to call out is solid waste. And we are planning on having a solid waste decision sometime in the next month, I think. Franz's point about, you know, if we're saying that this base budget is really about kind of replicating the level of service that we currently have, yeah, option B, which is 1.4 million, probably in my mind, is in this budget, right? I know it's not actually there, but like, when I think about it, I can't imagine us saying to people who live in this town, you know what? Go figure it out yourself. I, it was interesting actually, because one of the things that we've talked about recently is like other communities that don't provide a trash service. And so Vernon is one of them. I have a friend that lives there. They just moved there. And they're paying 50 bucks a month for Franklin to come and haul their trash and recycling every couple of weeks on an alternating basis. 600 bucks a year. And I think that the most expensive option in our current proposal is significantly less than that. You know, so I'm not saying that that's, again, going back, we're not making a decision right now, but I want to flag that we're going to need to talk about solid waste. Right? And we have to talk about solid waste. We need to make a decision on that. Peter?
Yeah, so no, I would just, I would myself like to see that number reflected in this budget moving forward. Just, just so that, because if, if we work hard to get this budget reduced and add that back in, you know, it's gonna, it's not, again, just.
It's a, it's a false calculation.
Yeah, it really is. So we do need to include that, that number. And if we, if we are taking a look at what we've done in the past, moving that number forward, we should be working with that 1.4 number.
Okay. All right.
So have we solved solid waste?
I don't think we've solved it, but I think we should put, I think we should put the option B number in the budget. And I think for the budget open house, it'll be important for people to wrestle with that, right? Because then what we're saying is a 22% increase to property tax rates if nothing changes. And when people hear that headline, they're going to have their reaction to it, just like I had my reaction to it earlier this week. And like, I'm sure many of the folks sitting here are reacting to it now. When the dust has settled on that reaction, then we get to put our thinking caps on and decide what we want to do about it. I'm going to stop talking. I feel like I've taken up a lot of space.
We feel that way too.
Yeah, thanks, Peter. Do you have something you'd like to add? It happens sometimes.
It does. No, I'm good.
Other board members? You want to talk about capital at all? Yeah, in a sec, in a second. Yeah.
I just want to follow up on something that Peter said, is that we have officer, an officer downtown, I'd use his name, but I'm not sure we want to do that. And people are feeling that things are happening down there. The chief, I think I said this at the last meeting that I was here in October, has 22 people, 22 officers on the street. I don't think she's had 22 officers since she's been our chief, and that's gone on five years. And she's been trying to get to the number 27. Now, we don't know what she can do when she gets to 27, but she asked for three more. I would have said, okay, let's see what you get when we finally get to 27, and she's been trying. And I agree with her method, that she just doesn't take anybody. She scrutinizes. And she's done a great job with the, with the people that she's brought in. But she's still five people short of that 27 number. Now, I agreed with the BRAT team. And I think that will have an impact. I think we're honestly overreacted was to say, we're going to give you three more police officers. Now, I'm not opposed to hiring those three police officers, but not until we at least get to 27. Because you're going to put money in that budget for ghost employees that I'm going to have to pay taxes on that we're not going to be, they're not going to be providing a service for me. And that's, and when you're looking at 20%, so reconsidering those three employees on a temporary basis. And it takes so long to get these people in. There might not be five people by the next budget cycle. I don't know. But to put three people in that she's probably not going to get to, or you can do what you did this year. You know? Take that surplus revenue. Just revisit what you did and say, we're not going to spend that money. But tell her, and I would support that. But supporting three people right at this point, when we're probably not going to get them and we're all going to have to pay taxes on them, when we're looking at a 20% increase, I would really, really impose upon you to reconsider. Because things are getting a little bit better just with the officer downtown. And when those BRAT people, officers get down there, I think it's going to be even a little bit better. But let's wait and see before we just go, hmm. I think it's incumbent upon us because of where you are right now, even if you reduce those three officers, you're still going to be sitting at, what, 17%? Increase? That's huge. So I would ask you really to reconsider those and then say, we're not, we're not telling you, you can't have them. But let's get to 27 and see what that does. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, you heard. And I think that that would be part of a discussion that we'd have, you know, in taking another look at it. Any other members of the public with like clarifying questions about this budget alternates, capital? And then after this, we're going to move on to possible service reductions or savings.
Kate O'Connor, Brattleboro. The one thing I would love to see is we have the list of capital projects and capital equipment. But what we don't have is the Excel spreadsheet, if you think about it, that goes across and says really what years we need. Because I think those need to be revisited based on, can it go another year or whatever? Because we don't know. I went back to prior budgets and some of those things are new. And so I think that would be really helpful to have.
Great, thanks, Kate.
Is that spreadsheet already on the website somewhere? I think I've seen it relatively recently.
Like the capital replacement plan?
Long-term capital cost?
It's in the 23, 24 annual budget book for RTM. That was the, that was for projects. And then the equipment long-term plan is a much bigger involved spreadsheet that is complex. I'm not sure that is posted anywhere.
Okay, if those could be more easily available, that would be great.
Yeah, okay. Patrick?
Yes, sir. I was just going to say, lots of time and lots of effort by a lot of people went into getting these documents prepared and put together and having them ready for this meeting. Those other capital planning documents, the five-year project plan and the long-term equipment plan, we will get those finalized and made available quickly.
Great, thanks, Patrick. Let's move on to service reductions or savings. And so this is a place not to solve everything, but to kind of like raise some like general policy areas that we could look at for service reductions in order to bring this tax rate down. I got a list of about 10, but I can wait.
Where is, is that page that I'm looking at?
I'm looking at page 53 for these questions. But really, we're talking about like, what do you, what do you see as places that you could imagine reducing the level of service in order to reduce the tax rate? Franz?
Well, I'll just say it out loud that in this budget, where so much of the expenditure is on personnel, if you're going to make a meaningful reduction in the budget, it means a reduction in personnel. And how that would be approached and to what extent it should be approached, I don't have an answer. But I think if we're looking for substantial decreases in the amount that the town spends, it's necessarily going to have something to do with the number of people who work for the town.
Okay. Other comments? Richard?
Personnel is the biggest area in terms of the money. I think we have to consider not giving any increases at all to the non-union people or at least negotiating a level. But it would be my wish to, because we're going to have to make so many painful decisions, that that at least be a starting point for showing people how, you know, the kind of cuts that we need to make to make this, the taxes affordable to people in Brattleboro. And it's drastic, but I think you need to consider it.
Okay. I'd like to weigh in. So in order to provide the level of service that this community is becoming accustomed to, I'm not, first of all, looking to cut staff or to reduce salaries. I think we can do a few other things. Or at least we can look at a few other things. I would want to start with the capital plan. The capital plan is significantly larger than it was in previous years. And I know there's good reason for that. I know that previous select boards deferred some things and, you know, here we are. But I, I would like a But I, I would like us to be talking about, are there ways to responsibly reduce or delay these capital expenditures? With regards delay, I, you know, and this is right on the edge of responsible, I would say. Um, I think that the EMS transport revenue that we've projected in the budget is extremely conservative, but we do not really have good enough actual data right now to project something different. I'm hoping that by a month from now, we might have some data to start building out a projection that's based on our actual experience. And I wonder if, you know, the difference between what we're projecting right now with this very conservative revenue estimate and what we might reasonably expect in the end of FY '25 could maybe inform, you know, some ways to save elsewhere. Like, for example, if we learned that, oh, it's actually gonna be $200,000 higher potentially, right? It's a roll of the dice. We could, you know, make then $200,000 worth of savings elsewhere. But that's like risky, and if it doesn't pay off, then we're in all kinds of trouble. Uh, but I wanna just name that it's something I'd consider. Liz?
So some of these things I've already mentioned, but since you're asking again, I, I think, um, I would look forward to the town manager to working with the staff, um, on revisions, and they would include COLA, human services, review of prior ARPA decisions, a hold on the pool. Uh, the pool's probably not in this budget now.
It's not?
No.
And, you know, uh, just a general review, not just of capital costs, but of, you know, the budget as a whole.
A general review of the budget as a whole?
Yeah.
That's quite high level. I mean, I, all of your specific ones, I, I hear you, and I think John has written them down, and we will get to them by the looks of it. Peter?
Yeah. Um, so I'm gonna sound a little bit like our chair when I say in my line of work, um, which is not as noble as our chair's line of work. You know, I, I know that, uh, I, I know what it looks like when staff continues to be cut, right? And, and where we look to make those decisions about, about cutting people out who are currently working and, and doing things. And, and, and those reductions, um, fall to the bottom line of a spreadsheet. Those responsibilities get dispersed. And then as they get dispersed, and the workload becomes harder and harder on the people who have remained, less and less begins to happen. The, the, you know, the grease gets thick, it gets cold, it doesn't move, it doesn't flow a, as easily. And this is nothing that you're gonna see in six, eight, nine months, but when you get a year down the line, that's when these things start to appear. They begin to look like burnout. They begin to look like people are just exhausted, they can't do it anymore. They, they find other, other, other employment, and we begin to lose more people like that. I think that if we are going to look in that capacity, maybe an answer to this is looking at the positions that have been budgeted but have not been filled yet. So, because that is currently work that we are doing, um, in, in spite of that, not looking to take person A and say, okay, you no longer have a job, we're just gonna disperse it amongst your department and other people. Because I think that really does lead to, it doesn't end well.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter. Appreciate that. Uh, Liz?
And I would just add to that, that we do need a fire chief.
Yeah, I think we're hiring.
I, I had no intention of not. That wasn't, that wasn't part of my rap.
Yeah, thank you. I want to talk, oh, go ahead, Richard.
You, you talked about, uh, capital, uh, budget. Could you expand at all or get into any details what you meant by that?
Yeah, so on, geez, on a piece of paper somewhere. Attachment C is the list of capital projects and capital vehicles and equipment replacement. And so the projects are things like road paving, um, sidewalk replacement and repair, retaining wall, infrastructure, uh, bridges and large culvert infrastructure. And, you know, that is all critical stuff. You know, we pave fewer miles of roads, and we definitely hear about it, right? We hear about it as it is. We, the Public Works Department has already told us that the amount of road paving that we're doing is significantly under what we need to be doing, but it's what we can currently afford previously. So I was proposing that we consider these capital projects and look at reducing the scope of them with a bid to save us some money. But you've got to understand that reducing the scope of them has a level of service impact. More potholes, you know, less safe sidewalks, um, that kind of thing. And, you know, bridges and culverts in the current, you know, era that we're in, we need to be investing in our bridges and culverts, not reducing. But I think we owe it to the public to have a consideration of all those things so that we can all understand what the cost and benefit, you know, is. Liz?
Uh, I really appreciate you saying that, Daniel, because I, I happen to know that you love paving and sidewalks.
I do love.
No, I mean, you do, and so that's, that's a big ask on your part. And I think, um, one of the ways that we can kind of skin that cat is to look at what our DPW staff can do versus what outside contractors would do. And I think that that's a way to create some savings.
Right. Is there, are there savings to be had by doing work in-house? I would imagine there are probably reasons why we don't do the work.
Yes, I know, but in terms of like, if, if you wanted to, um, reduce that budget, I think keeping our own people doing that work would be appropriate, and, uh, going outside would be the way to reduce the budget.
Yeah, John?
I, I will point out that we, so, so in doing this, developing a long-term capital plan, which nobody's gonna like to see that.
I know.
But just in roads, I think we have something like a $16 million backlog, something like that. So every reduction here is like a less chipping away at that backlog. That's something that I think we'll be able to get more and more of a handle on as, as we learn more. But what we would intend to do is, Daniel, what you and Liz are suggesting, but we'll also give you the risks and the upsides and the downsides of, of all of these items.
Exactly, exactly, John. Yeah, Liz?
I just wanna take a note about the big picture, and, you know, I, I, um, as you know, my, my pet project for the year is to ask for state revenue sharing, and I think we can all see, uh, the significance and importance of that, but that's also, uh, more of a long-term item of, of educating the legislature for the need for such an item. But I, I think that we can see, um, you know, that we all need to understand that Brattleboro's a hub town. Brattleboro is an older New England community, and costs are high. And then, and also in context, this is kind of a, a post-COVID condition where costs are high, inflation is high, um, and also the needs of the community are great. So all of that context is really the stew in which we're making these decisions.
Great, thank you. On that revenue note, I was wondering about, uh, payments in lieu of taxes. It's in the budget for $180,000 in revenue. Is there any work that could be done, um, to look at those agreements that we have? Let's see if we can have something that is more advantageous to the town. Okay.
And that's part of our legislative agenda.
But I'm talking about our existing agreements with organizations that are tax exempt, right? And maybe, maybe some of this is like just learning a little bit more about our payments in lieu of taxes, our pilots.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of work that's gone on in the past year on pilots, and we can, uh, update you on that and why we're projecting where we are with that, so.
That, that'd be good, I think, John, yeah. And again, like, you know, going back, this is educating the board, it's educating the community. It's so that we can all make a decision in the end that we can all live with. Or at least a majority of RTM can live with. Yeah, okay, let's go to the public. John?
Uh, thank you. John Kennedy, West Brattleboro. I brought this up at RTM a number of times, but we have the highest sales use tax in the state at 7%. I know that the state of Vermont takes a 35% cut of all sales tax. Seems to me that that 1%, we're giving the state a gift and have been giving a gift for about six years. So in line with what Liz is talking about with revenue sharing, we have a strong story to tell about why we need that revenue sharing. I think we have a stronger story to tell, and I think the board maybe is where I should have been starting this conversation, to lean on our legislative delegation to bring some money back, because I don't think anybody in Montpelier has a vaguest idea. And I'm not even talking about directly to Brattleboro. I mean, it's a hub community. That money can come back in roads and stuff that serves the entire county, because not all of that money is generated from Brattleboro. So I think that's something I'd like to see in the discussion somehow.
Thanks, John. It's something that we talked about in our legislative agenda a little bit, um, but maybe continuing to.
And we'll continue.
Yeah. Dick?
I actually think that you should be cutting the select board stipend, uh, seriously reducing that. I think when the stipend was raised, it was raised in the hope of getting more people interested in running. I don't think that's, has borne a lot of fruit. We haven't been over-inn- inundated with, uh, people that have wanted to sit in those seats.
I can't imagine why.
I, and I can't either. The other thing I think that we should seriously look at, uh, is this building only being open four days a week and reducing the salaries for people to 32 hours and only requiring the department heads to be here on the fifth day. I think you really have to, all this conversation, I don't, I, unless you really hack into the, into the capital plan, which I have written down to, there's areas in that capital plan that can be reduced and/or moved, we're not gonna get, get there, and Fish is right, without the recurring cost. There's not, you can't cut discretionary spending. I mean, discretionary spending is, what, up 1% of this total budget if that? So the meat of this budget, obviously, that which everybody knows, and I've sat where you sit, is personnel. And so if you don't have the stomach for that, and it sounds to me like you don't, and Fish's idea, you know, that would mean we don't hire the IT coordinator, because I don't think he's been hired yet. Uh, yet he's in this budget, and if he was such a necessity, I'm not sure why he's not on board yet. We're, what, four and a half months in? So I think you should seriously have a conversation about, this place doesn't need to be open five days a week, and people will adjust.
Thanks. So that's a proposal from, uh, Dick. Does that have any traction here? Is it something that you, it's not about making a decision, it's about saying, these are areas that we want to investigate further. Is that something that we want to investigate further? Richard thinks it is.
I, I'm not sure.
At least that's what your eyebrows said. I don't know if that's what you meant.
I'm indecisive.
Your indecis-, is eyebrows said indecisive? All right. I mean, we could look at it. I don't love the sound of it. I think it's like, you know, saying to members of the public, boy, don't expect to be able to come to the town office five days a week. Yeah. Let's hear from Craig.
Uh, Craig Miskovich, District 7. And I don't envy you, and you have an extraordinarily difficult task ahead of you. And I feel your pain, but I, I also want you to feel the taxpayers' pain in this community. Not me. I can pay my taxes. Don't lose any sleep over me. But folks who are making 30 bucks an hour, and their spouse is making 30 bucks an hour, and they're making $120,000 a year, and if they buy a house at about two and a half times their annual salary, and you can't find a house for two and a half times your annual salary, but if you did, those folks are gonna be paying, you know, upwards of $10,000 a year in property taxes. $10,000 off of 12,000, $120,000 gross salary. That's an extraordinary number. I, I ask you, please don't think about this tax rate increase as a $300 tax on a typical house. It's $300 off of a lot of years in which we've said it's just another $300. And those additional $300 are now $10,000 of, of state and state educational tax and municipal taxes, but nobody cares. Your, your tax, your, your, your property tax is your property tax. And if you are looking at a 22% increase, I re, I, I suggest you, is it Marie Kondo, is that the woman's name? Take everything out of the house and only bring back the stuff that you can afford, right? We, we need to build this budget not by lopping off the top, but building up from the bottom. What would an essential function budget look like? Not what does the budget look like if we kept our existing services, but what is our essential core functions of municipal budget, municipal government? What does that budget look like? And then let's build up from that basic core function budget. It's 22%. We're not gonna be able to lop up off, enough off the top to get down to a manageable number. And I know the state educational tax is not your fault, but nobody thinks that. There, we're looking at a state educational tax increase in the state of Vermont this year of another double digits. It's going to break. We're getting close to breaking this, and we need to think different. And I'd encourage you to build up, not cut down.
Thanks, Craig. Um, I just wanna chime in with some of what you're saying there. I think it's really important that as we go through this process, that we develop kind of real-world scenarios for kind of like, I've, I've been thinking of those like model households, right? So a household that earns such and such an amount of money, and we assume that they have the median household assessed value, because otherwise it's all over the place. So we have that household with, say, I don't know, a $40,000 a year income. This household with, um, you know, $90,000. This household with 130. And we show what their real-world tax bills would look like, because there is some income sensitivity in, um, these taxes. So it is not applied equally across the whole town. Um, and so I would like to see us develop real-world models so that we can say to people, if the tax rate is such, here's roughly how many dollars you'd pay a year. And I've been talking this talk behind the scenes for a little while, so I know that Patrick is already working on it. Uh, and so Craig, I think that's my attempt at trying to kind of bring about what you're talking about here. And then secondly, that kind of like build the budget from the base up. We didn't do that, and John, you probably wanna speak to that.
Sure, and, uh, I, I mean, if, if, if you guys wanna give us some ideas about what services we're doing now are not essential, I, I, that's really what the conversation we need to have. We can do what Craig is saying, but I need to know what those areas are.
Maybe it needs a lot more consideration. Um, David?
David LeMond, District 9. I very much appreciate what Mr. Miskovich said, but I'd also add that there's a problem for renters. And I don't know that all landlords, every year, property taxes go up a certain amount, start making adjustments in rent rates. But clearly, if you're talking about a 20, 22% increase, they're going to do that. And this issue that you keep hearing about and want to address, which is the affordability of housing in this town. This will have substantial negative effects on affordable housing.
Yeah, thanks, David. Go ahead. Can I just talk about the police substation for a second? So we have been considering a possible police substation downtown with, you know, some other amenities, and it's actually gonna come up in a meeting in the near future, I think next week, actually. I wanted to put out there that- I wanted to put out there that we could consider slightly downsizing that plan, and then as a one-time, you know, thing, taking some of that revolving loan fund money that would have funded that plan, and applying it perhaps to our capital needs to um to offset general fund dollars and to reduce the tax rate that way. I just want to put out there that that's a possibility. Liz?
Um, I, you know, in recognizing that that entire program is being suggested to be paid for by the revolving loan fund, I would like to s- understand the pathway by which revolving loan fund can be used for town capital expenses.
Right, and I think I understood it as that money, because a significant chunk of our revolving loan fund is actually this matured UDAG money from like eight billion years ago, that is now washed fully clean of all of its obligations, and we can spend it on basically whatever we want.
Yeah, that's basically.
That's basically it, right? Yeah.
You you might not want to spend it on salaries or operating costs that you wouldn't be able to.
But we could spend it on, say, a couple of vehicles.
Yep.
But we could spend it on things that reduce our overall budget.
Right, so you could spend it on, say, like two hundred thousand dollars worth of um equipment, and then that would be a two hundred thousand dollar reduction from the general fund expenditures.
One time.
Well, by all.
One time.
By all means, look at that, John.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can look at that, we'll add that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Dick? Yeah, yeah, you want to come to the mic?
Liz men- mentioned ARPA, uh, and I remember the meeting where you talked about how you wanted to spend it, because you had to have that committed by a certain date, which you did, and are you allowed to recommit?
It's a great question, John.
And I think what what I took Liz referring to was our special projects list, so we um we used the, we committed the ARPA to spending that has already happened for salaries, so um with that, we did a transfer out of the general fund into a special projects fund. There is some remaining balance there, so we can look at reassigning that if um for projects that have not been spent yet, and that's that's what we'll analyze for you.
Yeah, I'd certainly like to see that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, other thoughts on service reductions or savings? And I'm guessing this won't be the last time we'll talk about it, so if other thoughts occur to members of the public or the board, um, you know, after this, we'll still be able to bring them up.
Yeah, certainly, and a- again, um, you know, we have a couple of months to do that, that time will go quickly, um, so the sooner that we can identify the areas where you might want to take service reductions, the sooner that we can analyze that and bring you back the repercussions of that, and you know, what what that looks like to the public, because it's not just, you know, um, three hundred dollar increase on on the median home tax, it's also like if you reduce that, what is the loss in service that people have come to expect that Brattleboro provides?
Yeah, definitely, and I think that's that's what we need to be hearing, right? Um, and I see you've got a quite a large list there already. Um, any further comments from the public about service reductions or savings, and then I want to go on to process and then close it out. Dick? Uh, let's go Kate first, we've heard from Dick playing.
Of course.
Goes without saying.
Kate O'Connor, Brattleboro, and you might gong me on this, but I just want to kind of follow up on what Craig was talking about. There are, you have to consider the taxpayer by a hundred percent what Craig just said, but there's also something else. You gotta look at this not just about this year, but it's what you're doing to future years, and there's a y- y- you're borderline, if you do too much, you're building a house of cards that's gonna fall on you. I sat where you sat for six years, I also worked in Montpelier for the governor for more than eleven, and I saw eleven state budgets from start to finish, and you gotta be really, really careful if you don't reduce now, as we're seeing, things are are going from one year to the other to the other. There is gonna be a time when you hit the ceiling, where you can't, people can't afford the taxes anymore, which means you're going to have to cut personnel, you're having to cut services, and you're gonna have to cut programs. To me, having all the experience I've had with this whole budget thing, if you don't get this under control now, you know, you're gonna be on a thing where we're gonna have huge financial problems in this town, worse than you have now. So I just want you to consider, one, the crushing impact this can have on the taxpayer, but what this could have long-term on our fin- you know, our long-term financial stability, and some of you, at least two of you, may be on the board when everything crashes down. I don't mean to be Chicken Little, but I've seen, at least on a state level, big decisions having to be made so we don't crush ourselves, so please just keep that in mind, too.
Thank you, Kate. And I want to say that, like, continued engagement in this process is only gonna make it better, right? So come in here, speak in your mind, be in collaborative, you know, trying to be productive, right? That's how we're gonna arrive at something that the whole community can say, that'll do, that's us, you know? So, yeah, let's let's keep that going. Can we talk about process? So John kind of laid out a process that we approved in, um, I don't know, the summit, um, with a series of meetings, an open house, some focus groups with RTM. We've already added another meeting next Tuesday, it's not a budget meeting as such, but we'll talk about the police substation plan, which could have some kind of tangential budget impact. I'm kind of feeling like, given the list that you've got going there, John, that we're probably gonna need to make sure there's a bit more time for budget meetings, and I know that that's kind of counter to what we were doing last year, um, but I am committed to having as many meetings as we need to have to kind of walk through these various difficult decisions, so that you all can consider them and we can consider them, so but by the time we get to like a select board-approved budget, we know that the public is behind it or not, you know? I'm hoping that the only budget we're gonna send to RTM is the budget that we've had robust discussion about, and everyone kind of understands the ins and outs of. So I'm thinking a few more meetings, I don't have necessarily specific dates, but it's looking to me like probably December. So I change your specific dates, December tenth, December seventeenth. One of my fellow board members, Nick, are you ready to have some more meetings?
I'm wide open on the twenty-fourth of December.
Yeah, me too.
I think we're gonna earn our stipend.
Yeah, we're gonna earn our stipend, that's for sure. I I feel like we already have been, but.
As as many meetings as we need to have, I'm available for.
Great. Okay, Dick, you want to make a comment about that? It's called turn-taking.
I, a couple of things. John, just use the uh hundred thousand dollar benchmark. I don't think we we have a few hundred thousand dollar homes, but the the median home in Brattleboro, I would guess is up over two fifty a- and above, so the impact that we're talking about, I hope that the next time we meet, you can have the impact on a hundred, two hundred and fifty, whatever the, work it all the way up to scale. And the other thing I would tell you is, when I stopped in the assessor's office today, is that I asked them for the grand list from twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. The grand list in twenty twenty-four is what you set the tax rate for this year, and there was a sixty thousand dollar growth. There was three new buildings, so that's telling you something about affordability. People aren't gonna want to come here with a ridiculous tax rate. People keep talking about a level of service, with all due respect, nobody really knows that you're talking about a twenty percent, twenty-one percent increase in their tax bill, and at some point, they're gonna go, you know what, we can do without this. And the one of the examples that I've used is the pool, and I've always complained that the pool closes August fifteenth. Why? Because all the lifeguards leave, and we still have a lot of hot weather from August fifteenth on, and we survive without the pool uh being open. And so I think people are going to be willing to survive a level of service of cuts, and you kind of poo-poo this place, only be opening for four days, but, you know, unless you really hack that capital plan, I really didn't hear anything that's gonna bring that budget number down. And so there should not be a sacred lamb in this budget that we're talking about, and if you have sacred lambs, then you're not doing any of us any service. We don't know what we can do without until we go without it. Think of these people in North Carolina, they don't have anything, and they're still upright, they're still breathing, and they're gonna build back. We're looking at maybe closing the building for one day.
Thank you. Um, John, do you want to respond to any?
Yeah, I can, um, so the number I've been quoting is the median home value of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred dollars uh for the uh grand list from uh twenty-three. As Dick pointed out, it's only gone up a a little bit, um, and uh, so that's, the tax increase here is three hundred dollars on a median home value in Brattleboro, so half of the homes, it will see less than three hundred dollar increase with the base budget, half of the homes receive more than a three hundred dollar increase. So if you think about a a home that's, uh, you know, twice the the median, so say, uh, three hundred and sixty thousand dollar assessed value, um, that would be a fifty dollars a month increase with this base budget, that's that's what the tax increase would be. So it's good to to think about all those scenarios, like you were saying, Daniel, we can bring back more ways to look at that and have people try to understand what this increase is, rather than fixating on a percent overall on the tax rate, it's like, what does it really mean on a tax bill to people?
Yes.
I think that's.
Exactly, I mean, I I feel like every budget cycle I've been part of, like, bringing it back to like real-world, actual dollars is the best way to talk about it, because when we just talk about percentages, it's.
Yeah, it's people.
Okay, any of the process corrections, thoughts, amendments? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, then I'm gonna suggest that we are done with this initial consideration of the FY twenty-six base budget, and I think that we actually did a lot of good work here, and I think that we partnered uh pretty well, and aside from a couple of moments, we did uh, we did some nice job. Yeah.
If I could just emphasize the importance that I see of the forum next Tuesday for people to come in and and learn about and talk about the budget, I I I'm very hopeful that we'll have a really good turnout for that, and uh and certainly people here, but also people who aren't here, I hope we'll see there.
Great, so Franz is referencing the budget open house, which is next Tuesday at the library from four to six P M. John, you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh second that, what Franz is saying, I think that's a really good o- see, uh, you know, as Dick mentioned, like, we really only had one proposal of, it was on the floor tonight, of a service reduction, I was hopefully to hear that, I I wasn't hearing a lot of interest in pursuing that here, but I think by having conversations with each of the department heads, people in the public, board members can start to explore, well, wh- where is the wiggle room in in each of the department's budgets, and that might generate at your November nineteenth meeting, additional proposals around service reductions, which is really what we need. We need to know, what are those things you want to stop giving people in Brattleboro, and then we can figure out what that would save.
Thanks, John. Can I just say, process-wise, we used to have budget notebooks that we kept for budget season, and because what happens is all this stuff gets recycled, so I'd ask that all of our budget material is retained, so that we can have it next time, because I've written a ton of notes on here, and I don't want them to disappear.
Yep.
Cool. Kate, you want to say something real quick?
Are we just gonna rerun the budget with the trash line item in it, so we can see it all again? Because I think there needs to be truth in advertising, and if people are looking at the budget, they're not gonna be looking at the entire tax impact.
I think that's kind of what we were asking for, that we did put in the the option B for solid waste, so how you understood it, John? I don't know about rerun, but like, the the figure that we're talking about would include.
I mean, all the information is in the materials that you have, it would be a one-point-four million increase or another um eight percent on the tax rate for doing what was suggested.
Yeah.
But I think if you want to basically accept that alternate, we can add it back into the base budget and and rerun it as a kind of working draft or something like that.
I think we should.
Yeah, I think that's fair and honest, and I understand why you did, you know, didn't include it, because we hadn't made that decision, and we still haven't made that decision, but it's at least a draft, as you say.
But we're gonna make that decision.
Yeah, pretty soon.
I think it's a fair assumption to include.
Yeah. Okay, cool. So base budget discussion number one concluded, that leaves us with nothing else but to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Liz has made a motion to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that passes some number of votes, zero, I think, definitely four, I heard, maybe five, five, zero, we are adjourned. Thank you, BCTV, thank you, town staff, thank you, members of the public, and I hope everybody has a nice election eve and wakes up to something good tomorrow, or the day after, or the day after that.